Well.
Hello.
All right, we started City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, about to begin here at 6:00 PM. Members present, Mark McKibben, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucom, Matt Sack, Doug Pope, and Andrew Shott. We're starting at 6 o'clock, I called the order at 6 o'clock. And is there any public participation? Where is, where is the softballers at?
They are not here.
So it must not have been in there before.
But Dan, if he does, we're to come in late, we'll just skip over your, oh, wait, Mr. Wagner has something, I guess he wants to say that.
Well, yes, I guess fortunately I do. There was some conversation last week, I guess it was going on on Facebook and Kevin had stopped it. Yeah, and so this adult league had a meeting Thursday night last week, and they came to that meeting. So I think they got the issues resolved.
I spoke to him Wednesday morning and said, if any issues come up, I set you time aside, so.
Well, anytime, anybody wants to use any of the fields, I'll direct them to whoever the board is, and then they need to come to a mutual agreement of when everybody can use it, and if they can't come to an agreement, then I'll make the agreement.
You'll get involved.
Yeah, so we have had traveling teams use Little League before, but I let them work it out. They have first time, first choice because they've been taking care of them, so, but we let anybody use them at any time.
Well, I know that.
Yeah, so hopefully they took care of all their issues last Thursday night.
Apparently they did, so if they do show up, we'll sort them out. So I guess I'll adjourn that by 6:01 or something, I can't. Okay.
I'll call them to order at 02.
Okay.
It's all yours. We don't know what street you have.
Well, in our resolution in 208x 2019, we had a list of our streets this year for mill and pave.
It's on the backside of that Latuason legislation.
And on Westone Street, we were going to do Wheeler Too Short and Be Southern Avenue. We'll do to the Group Two project and the Group One project, the same contractor got both bids, so he wanted to wait to do both of them, because they're both in that intersection, so he wanted to wait before we did any paving in that area until he got done with both projects. So we also have a manhole we need to replace in front of the county engineer's office at the same time. So we pulled that street just because we didn't want to tear it up after, you know, right as we got done paving it. So that, that was 103,00109. But in Group Two, we are doing Faylor Avenue, which it's probably never been repaved since it's been put in. So the rough estimate cost to do that street, because we're in there doing sewer pipe and storm drains and things like that, we'd like to go ahead and repave that street this year instead of just doing a trench hill, and that would be about 20,000. So really, all we're asking is to pull the Westone project and move it to next year to pave and add Faylor Street.
The entire length of Faylor?
Yeah.
Just on the north side of Villar, not down the south part?
Correct. Well, it'd be the south.
South, east, off the southern.
No, you're correct, first one.
Okay.
In the north. Yeah. Back where we're working on the plants, or the steward of storm plants.
So you're wanting us to?
All we need to do is get a verbal for this? I'm looking at you.
Oh. Yeah, because we're not spending any new money, it's just changing, you know, the order for streets and stuff.
So you're wanting us just to do Faylor, and we're still allocating 103,000?
No, we will add that back in next year. So we'll have a savings of about 83,000 of this year on mill and pave. We won't spend it. Because Faylor will only be about 20,000.
So is there a way I can get a street done yet this year?
That's up to committee.
Well, I got Wayne Avenue out there, it's really in bad shape. From East Mearsville Street, all they got is a puddle.
I can get a price and exceed, I wouldn't think it would put us over.
I would say if we've already appropriated the money, or if, I think if it comes in under what was appropriated, I have no issue with telling them to go ahead and do that.
Because we'll have the mill machine back in town, I just need to let them know here rather quickly if we're allowed to do that.
Yep.
Can we just work out?
Well, I guess all I need to know is if it's below 80,000, I can go ahead and do it, it should be. The only thing I'd have to check for sure is just make sure we don't have no manholes or curb drain or anything like that to have to replace.
I would think the other thing too that we want to know is, are we planning on digging it up anytime in the next couple of years for, you know, these water or sewer projects? So that would be the other thing.
Yeah, just that near the Mansfield Street, we would be out there, maybe in the tree lawn area for a storm drain, but not, you know, we could stop before the intersection.
And then finish it once the intersection?
Yeah.
Is that what you want, Dan, we just need motion?
Okay, you're up.
So you just need to go get?
I will, we investigate Wayne Avenue.
You want to make it so if it wants to don't exceed 80,000, go ahead with it?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion passed. Put Wayne Avenue on there.
All right, I'll get a flag on any issues, I'll let you know.
All right, better than that, and if there's something else, I will adjourn at 6:07.
All right, 6:07. We'll just call it right there. Ah, it says combined sewer overflow number six, we have Mr. Wagner.
Yes, you guys all have a picture in front of you? I'll just kind of go down the list. Number one is, it's called a weir, and basically when, that's a combined system there, in the purple, when that water and storm and sanitary comes empty there, and that pipe that's going to the interceptor gets full, that weir will close and shove it down the pipe going into number two there that's in the orange, and number three is a manhole, and number four is the other drain going directly north, and that goes to the C S O, which is number five, which is C S O number six. The problem we have right now, there is a block pipe at number two, which is about, we're estimating about 30 feet long or 40 feet long, but it's 30 feet deep. And number four, we have the same thing, it's an old metal pipe that's crushed and fell in, we did get a video camera at that far, but it's, like I said, it's 30 feet deep and we don't have the equipment to fix it. We've been working on it for, I don't know, I want to say since April, between the rain we had in June, we couldn't get up in there, and we tried, we had a cleaning company, Town and H, couldn't get it. But with that weir being closed and it's hitting that block pipe in section two, it's shoving it out the top and it's making its own way to the river. And I got Ohio EPA breathing down my neck that I got to get this fixed. Because he told me, you're either going to get it fixed or I'm going to turn it over to the U S E P A. He was very nice about it, I told him what we were doing and what we were trying, I said, just give me time, I'm going to do a council, but we have one of our contractors in town right now, that's willing to pull off one of our jobs and get it fixed, but I got to get it fixed, and we can't do it.
Is this right behind Quinns?
Yeah, it's right behind Mark Quinns, and I'm hoping we can stay away from the railroad tracks, we're hoping the pipe's still good that far. Rod, if you want to explain the emergency part of it?
Well, the emergency part of it is, is the, you've got to copy the engineering estimate here, which is roughly 125,000. We could have come in less than that, but to do it without going through the bidding process and going through that timeframe of getting it done, you know, before we run into weather and those other things, we have to have an ordinance passed by council authorizing us to spend anything over the $50,000 statutory limit by two-thirds majority of council. So we've created a draft ordinance for you, if you chose to move forward today, to authorize the service safety director to get that done.
Ted, would you like to read this ordinance for everybody so that we can get it, everybody in here?
Just the capture of the whole.
The whole thing.
An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to contract with Dirt Dog Excavator LLC for the immediate maintenance and repair of combined sewer overflow number six and declaring an emergency. Whereas combined sewer overflow number six is in need of immediate repair and maintenance, and whereas the Ohio EPA has demanded that the City of Visayas need a repair combined sewer overflow number six, and whereas the repair and maintenance of combined sewer overflow number six is needed on an emergency basis to avoid additional penalties by the Ohio and U S E P A, and whereas Ohio Advice Code Section 735.051 authorizes the expenditure of funds for a contract for work to be performed on the purchase of supplies in excess of the statutory bid amount when a real and present emergency arises, and whereas for the health and safety of the residents of the City of Visayas, and due to a real and present emergency requiring the repair and maintenance of combined sewer overflow number six, this legislation needs to be adopted as an emergency, now therefore be resolved at a council of the City of Visayas, State of Ohio, and two-thirds of all members elected there to be occurring. Section one, the service safety director is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Dirt Dog Excavator LLC for the immediate repair and maintenance of combined sewer overflow number six, for a amount not to exceed $125,000 without competitive bidding or advertising, is authorized by Section 735.051 of the Ohio Advice Code. Section two, the disordinance shall be a remanded full force in effect from and after its passage with a duplication in the earliest period of, blah, blah, blah.
Do you have a motion?
I've got a question. Paragraph number three is combined service, and so this sewer overflow is going to change anything, I know that we were going to try to keep this down tonight.
In which one?
Paragraph number three says combined service overflow, really less than saying what sewer.
That's a type.
Yeah.
The second where.
Yeah, just asking if that's going to cause us any issues, because I'm assuming you already have it typed up for passage tonight.
Yeah.
So we'll make that change on your sewer.
And another question. Where, do we have this already budgeted from somewhere, or is this coming from anywhere specific?
I talked to the auditor, and we can paper it out of stormwater.
And I was just looking at the lines here, and between stormwater improvements and somehow a line that got slipped in that still says State Route 98, which was Plymouth Street, there's $100,000 there that's appropriated, and so we can move that up to stormwater improvements, and we got the money there to do it.
I was going to ask, I looked at my form Tuesday, but I don't have it with me, with stormwater, we should be at 75%, where are we?
On revenues?
Yeah. I think that one's below.
Well, it may be, and I don't have my revenue chart over here.
I couldn't remember what, I think that was one of the ones that was below.
It's really different looking at it.
Probably used to look at the blue and white, the green and white lines for the last one.
Stormwater, you're at 74, you're at 55.61%.
As far as revenues, but if you look at total cash and revenue, we're at 76.35.
So we're on target with what we want, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Because we had, we had a big carryover into this year's.
Okay. Do you have an idea of what fines and penalties would be if we were to do this? Did they give you an idea?
Oh, no, he just told me that if we didn't get it resolved, right now, if we have a rain and we have an overflow that activates and it starts coming, we have to go out and take pictures, and we have to record it, you know. He has been very patient with us, and it's just, if we can't have it coming out on the ground, it's, we have help, hasn't it?
This, this C S O wasn't originally 30 feet down, was it?
Well, the C S O is not 30 feet deep, it's the pipe that goes, well, because it goes downhill, so it's not as deep as the C S O at the river, but as it comes up, the ground has gotten filled in up there behind Quinns and Mary Street, so as he built that up in the back, the pipe ended up 30 feet deep. So, and I think we allowed him to do that years and years ago when he was building that, I wasn't here when he built that, but that's from what I was being told, and it is what it is there, and it's 30 feet deep, and they're going to have to stairs step down to get to it.
So it'll remain 30 feet deep when they're there.
So it's probably, yeah, because it's all leveled off, and so we're putting concrete pipe in, you know, so we don't have to worry about it failing there, you know, for a long time, so.
It's 30 feet below the railroad too, so my name, it's not like, you know, just Quinns property is on top of it, railroad property is on top of it too, that pretty. So.
I'll make a motion. Got it done, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say a lot of passes.
Yeah, well then also go to finance committee.
OPW C projects.
Yes, as we had discussion in July or August about the water line on 9/8, I went to the Schraffer County OPW C meeting, and they got back to me, and based off of Lynn's estimate of 582,000, we'll get an OPW C grant of 185, and we'll take the Great Lakes fund we were going to spend this year, which was 185, between converting into raw water line and buying the valves, to put in the raw water line, that totaled 185, and that leaves the city sheriff for next year to put the water line in at 212,023,000.
Questions?
So this would be, Jim, this would be a twin project for next year?
Yeah, the OPW C project, it'll start after July.
Okay, but you need some legislation, is my understanding for OPW C, is that correct?
Yeah, I have to get it turned into the county.
And then we would have to come back again then later and actually do legislation for the project when we're ready to go to bid.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are the steps that would have to be taken.
So you're asking just for a motion to proceed?
Dan.
What size is that line that goes, I guess, south and then?
18 inch.
That's 18, so yeah, 18, well.
18 and 12, yeah. When Lynn was here, she said you ran through the model, if something happened to the 18 and 12, would still be able to handle what we needed. They did a flow all the way down to wayside, so they said it could handle it.
So I think the last piece here then proves is the legislation that we had done once before for this OPW C money, and that's what we're looking to get this evening.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, I need a motion. So move. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I'm going to try to hear it by whatever Monica says.
Six minutes.
I'm going to assume Monica still says that six minutes in for elephant safety. First item is the Derelict Housing, General Agent Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you, sir. I think it's really more companies, Doug, I'm like.
We have some pictures.
Oh, very good, but those are the estimates. We've been working on these all year, and these are the four properties that were slated for demo that we're going to use our funds for. We have appropriated, you guys appropriated last year $30,000, we spent roughly 2,500 of that on the asbestos evaluation, which luckily came back negative, we didn't have any asbestos on any of those properties, I was slightly schwimm building a little bit on that, but it came clear. So we have two estimates, I gave you two, Mr. Myers there, one from GMC that is currently doing the land-based properties, and then he does the other from E and H, Mr. Ashman is here from E and H. And they're roughly about the same, depending on, you know, what you do. Problem is, we have roughly 27,500 left in that fund, both the estimates are in the 40-ish thousand dollar range, keep in mind that when we went out to bid, the only bidder we had was 140,000, 134, I think the phone was, so we had to reject that bid, so we called around, called around, and finally got two local bids. Problem is, to do all four, it's going to cost about $40,000, give or take. We've got 27,500 in the budget, so the options are either you guys give me more money, or two, we just hold off on the schwinn building, because I think, and I think you guys would agree, that, as sad as this is, of the four buildings, the schwinn building is probably the one that is in the best shape.
It's still standing and it's not open.
No, no, but if we do hold off on the schwinn building for another year, two things, one, we have to, I think we have to go back to both of those companies and say, you know, look, we're not going to do the schwinn building, so, you know, the economy's at scale being what they are, is it a little bit more to do just three, or is it a little bit less? Whatever, and get a number for that, and second, since if we only do three, and that'd be a little bit less than the 27,500, I think I would, I'll come back and get a P O from one of those companies to do a little work to make that schwinn building a little bit more secure than it is right now, glass, board up those front windows, and we may spend a little bit of money on that, but, you know, every time we go by, see, push open one of those doors, schwinn building, and trust me, there's nothing in there, so, you know, except the collapsing floor that I gave you right now, that's why you bring that couch. But, so, that's the options. We spend, we spend what money we have on the three properties, 1305 and 13084, which I don't think has been up there, but it is, there's more, and just, the longer it goes, the more of a dumping ground it becomes.
A little bit of a hint.
What?
Where's the one?
It's off, it's northwest off of.
North.
Yeah. If you go to the.
Road material, almost.
Almost, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's right on the edge of the state limits, I mean, it's Fields behind it, and it's two houses side by side, and then Westone Street, that, that's, I mean, that's impacting the entire neighborhood, but that's a real problem.
Do you have any insurance money from that, from the buyer?
Uh, the insurance, it was insured, the insurers did not pay because they believe that their mayor may not have been arson, so they used that, and then the homeowner didn't fight that.
Telltale sign. I suppose, Mr. Rutherford, if you could reach out to GMC and ask that question, and is it fair to ask you that question now, or if you're not prepared to answer, if we were to just take that out, you've got it listed for the schwinn building at 17,500, would the remainder of the property be what you quoted minus that 17,500, or would you need to adjust?
It would need to be adjusted slightly.
Okay, could I ask that you just submit an adjustment to Mr. Rutherford for him to share with us here in the next couple of days?
Sure. Would you also want someone to secure the schwinn? The schwinn building is wide open, I mean, we were able to add gain access to every aspect of it, to check it, and the flooring in it is, unfortunately, somebody goes in there and gets hurt, that's, that's wide open front, back, in both, both buildings, there's two buildings with that property, best of month, both, yeah.
Building it, right.
So the entire thing, both of them are, are wide open.
I think it would be foolish to add in a security net building, getting those windows boarded up.
Have you taken the time to look, and I'm sure you have, to look, to see, do we have the ability from to pull that remaining 17,000 from anywhere else to get it taken care of because of the risk that poses?
I personally have not looked at that, that's a question from the auditor, it would have to come somewhere, did we, it was 13,500, I think was what, roughly, additional money?
Yeah, that's what. Yeah. It could be done.
Do we, if worst case scenario, do we possess the ability to somehow front that 13,500 out of next year's budget? Rather than make your budget 13,500 less next year if we have to?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Add it in this year's budget, but take it, reduce next year's?
Yeah, if we have to, from pulling another line out that carries over.
I don't know what the law director's looking at as far as what he wants to do next year, I mean, what, what else is out there?
I think we can all agree.
I know there's things out there, but.
I think we can all agree that it needs to come down.
Well, I think this description makes it sound really.
Correct. And I'll tell you, if we sit here and decide not to do it, and something does happen to somebody, then we're all going to regret that decision. It's not, I was just going to say, it's not like we have a decision of either to take it down or not to take it down, it's to take it down now or to take it down later.
Yeah, a year from now, and I'd ask Mr. Kramer, actually, I know he's not here for this purpose, but are you, are you guys, and I didn't check beforehand, but are you guys handling any calls, trespassing calls or anything involving that schwinn building?
Probably three weeks ago, I actually got called out there, because the back door was actually, I would call about it being quite open, myself, I was probably worried we could go inside, but we didn't go in too far. How bad it was inside?
Yeah, I will say that I entered that building back in May, when the asbestos guys were there, and the floor is like a floor concrete slab, I don't know how to describe it, but it's about that thick, and it's cracked and buckled, so it's, there's like three big pieces and they're mismatched, so I walked on it, didn't collapse, but I wouldn't have jumped or anything. So it's in bad condition, and at a minimum, I think we, and Scott could probably give you some insight, he was in it as well.
Yes, he walked softly as well.
Yeah, so that's why I think we definitely need to at least board it up, I mean, our guys may be able to do it, and save us a little bit of money there to board it up.
And I guess, I'm not favored for it, you know, I'm much more in favor of seeing if we can just find a way to make this happen. You know, it's already an unsightly site, for the day, we're going to look at it, fly away with windows, it's going to be worse, you know, that's not guaranteed, you keep people out, actually, what it does is when the people are inside, I'm not going to see it now.
And I, there are a couple neighbors that are interested in the property too, so they have approached me about it, so it would be something.
They want to purchase it?
Huh?
They'll purchase 13,000.
No, I don't think so.
And keep in mind, all these properties that the city is demoing, these are properties that we're, these aren't land-based properties, so these are properties that we're paying for the demo, and then we will assess those costs to the property tax.
So we don't actually, we're not the end user.
We're not the end user, well, eventually we'll be the end user when they get foreclosed on by the county at some point in time, they'll come back to us, and then we can try to recruit any money we can off of those lots. The Westone lot is a buildable lot, that's probably got some value.
Yeah, this 41 or 42,000 can all be reassessed after the taxes.
It'll be reassessed after the taxes when they come back to us, so that'll get cleared out, but we'll be able to, eventually we'll recover those properties, a couple years from now, we'll be able to sell them, and all three of those lots have some value to them for now.
Mr. Vogel, you first.
We have the proceeds still left in the C I C account exactly.
That, that has to go to capital improvements, I don't think it would qualify, I defer to the auditor on that, but I stayed on there, I suppose, but that has to be capital improvement money, so I don't believe it qualifies for.
Yeah, I think we can use that.
Capital, define capital improvement, I mean, you're approving that, that land?
Right, because it's still not our land yet.
Yeah, it's not our land. Yeah, it's not our land, we don't really, not, if, if, yeah, I mean, if we owned it and we were gonna tear it down and do something with it, then maybe, but.
We really don't want to be a real estate business, I.
Right, right.
Or the.
Good, long going business.
Does CIC give us any loan?
I don't think that would be necessary because we've got.
You think that we've got the ability to afford that first?
Yes.
And like, it's a worst case scenario, reduce next year's budget, but if we have to.
Right.
But if we don't have to. I'd just like to see it get done and taken care of rather than wait.
I, I agree.
Some of those people on Hoppe Avenue, but this shirt up is, is the key thing.
Right.
It, it, it's in dangerous condition, I'm trying to be sure.
Andy, Bruce, Mark, I guess I'll ask where you guys are at in your heads with this.
I'd be willing, I'd be willing to make a motion to take down all four. We're always insisting that we have the extra money to fit it into the budget for this year.
All stack no stats.
I got a question. If you guys take it down, you won't go beyond this front sidewalk, will you?
No.
As you're gonna say, because I, I remember years ago, there was actually a firefighting system in front of Schwinn building. You know, when they used to have horse, horse going wells and.
Oh, there is, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right in that front sidewalk, right out by the street. There's actually a manhole cover there and, so, I, I'm just thinking, so you guys don't want to interfere with that.
Well, we, both of these estimates were done under the city's requirements for doing the basements, I let both guys know. Land bank requires that the basement be completely dug up, removed and.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
But the city ordinance is different, it just requires that it be broken up and it can be used to refill, so on that building, that may be beneficial to not be digging all that stuff out.
Well, this, this is out by the street.
Yeah, that building's pretty close, I don't know, I don't know which avenue needs it.
But.
No, I thought it was a good thing that the land bank does what they do.
Yeah.
Because if you ever do want to build something, at least it's virgin soil there to, to build with.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather see us spend more than actually do it.
Correct.
And get rid of foundation, get rid of, get rid of everything.
But that would drive this price up considerably, right? You didn't go to bid for that.
It, man, I'd have to, you have to look at the exact details of what their bids were.
What kind of law company are you saying, law?
No.
Some aren't built, some aren't built.
The one on West Oak is on a slab.
There's no foundation there.
Yeah, the one on West Oak is on a slab.
The one on Ora would have half foundation.
Yeah, if anything.
Yeah, both of, both of them are removal of all cement, asphalt material for the building and, and GMC's as well as complete removal foundation, so they both voted on that way, that removal.
Amazingly, what is, the one on West Oak was put there in two thousand and four.
Yeah, that one's on a slab, so I mean, that's a lot of work.
So you said you would be interested in making a motion now? So we got a motion? We got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of going ahead with allowing them to accept one of these two bids? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Your next option is pick a bid.
Is that our job?
It.
I think that's their job.
Well, they're, they're quotes, so we'll turn it over to.
The administration.
Yeah, that's what I think, your bid? Good? Thank you.
Stay by the lever.
There you go.
So you did say we were looking at forty thousand if we did all of them, right?
Yeah, they're both right at, one was forty-one five, one was forty-two five.
Yeah. All right.
Hope that was okay to say or not?
Yeah, they're, they're quotes, not bids.
All right. Anything else to come before the committee this evening? If not, we'll recess at six thirty-four.
I will call finance to order at. Six thirty-four. First is the two thousand nineteen going K, which came from flooding. We just need our flooding as well.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Dan. Second, in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passed. Next up is the combined sewer overflow number six repair, which came from service. Same thing.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And the OPWC project for twenty twenty, which also came from service.
Motion approved. Second.
And the all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Do you do like housing penalties, which just came from health and safety?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have to wait until they approve or we just approve up to a certain dollar?
I'm just kidding.
Well, what you really need is you need, do you need an appropriation?
For?
To cover the thirteen thousand?
Yes, we can add it to my list.
Okay.
She's down at the bottom.
Very, very.
I have a list.
We don't need a motion for that at this point?
Well, not for finance, we need, it'll be included in your appropriations motion.
Okay. So then that puts us at the annual codified ordinances update.
Yeah, you have the attached draft ordinance for the annual updates for water drain. I guess about last year's ordinance that we passed in November, so we're right on track with the time. You'll notice that the ordinance, the draft ordinance only refers to as far as what is listed out here in section two. These are the changes to the state code. The changes to the local power preferences were fairly limited, I think we did about half a dozen, mostly zoning changes. Courtesy of our friends in Columbus, there are many, many changes to the traffic code, about thirty or forty here, which is why the legislation is so much longer and why the appropriation is about a thousand dollars more. So we just need the motion to replus that.
State made all the changes and we're paying them.
Yeah, that's right.
Very awesome. I'll let her.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Captain Hall in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, with various appropriations.
I'll pass these out, we'll be making some changes on this, so. This was hot on the front.
You got more than one page.
I do.
That's called appropriations.
Yeah. And there's.
Well, this one is.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have to change totals on here anyways, I'm gonna change some things. And I've got another thing in here that I didn't refer the other night, but I was just given numbers yesterday. With our new software, we have a new server and all that's fine, but we're gonna have to replace our towers, our workstations. We don't need monitors or keyboards or anything like that, we just need the towers because we're running on Windows seven, which will not be supported for security starting January one. And, you know, we don't want to get all this stuff and, and get breached. So that's added into my appropriations and I need to change that number too, because I put the whole thing under my budget and I need to split it with income tax, so. So what I have here, I have a lot for the general fund. And most of this, most of these items, and some of them are not very large, are for the first net cell phones that we have changed to, the majority of that cost goes to the police department. But this system, and Jeff can probably explain it better than I can, guarantees them to have service even if there's a disaster or, you know, something goes down.
Police and fire will always have communication, it's dedicated to them only. And then the other added part of it is, we will get credit at the end of the year, I think for the first year of seventy-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But then as we need new updated equipment after that, typically the, the phones or the laptop for GIS mapping or if you replace our equipment, we have this ninety-nine dollars. So that's an ongoing price, so as we look at the overall credit we're gonna get and the cost of getting that equipment, it was worth the switch, it's just we're not gonna get the credit till.
Yeah, we have to pay ahead and then at the end of the year, we get a seventy-two hundred dollar credit.
Just curiosity, does that cover also the laptops that are in the police cruisers and fire trucks?
So, I understand it does. So, in the general fund program on security of persons at property, we need to add, appropriate twenty-six hundred dollars to contractual services. In general government, we need to add eighty dollars to the mayor's budget in contractual services, a hundred and forty-five dollars to administration contractual services. The next line is my office's share, and like I said, I'm gonna have to change these totals, but I need actually twelve thousand dollars for these new computers in my office. And then income tax will need fourteen thousand because they have two additional computers at the counters. Those are less expensive than the other towers because they don't have Microsoft Office and that kind of thing on, they're just basically for income tax at the counter so that we can look up counts. Then in the law directors, contractual services, we need a hundred and forty-five dollars, service director thirty-six dollars. Then council, we need fifteen hundred dollars and that's for the longer grain codified ordinances. Engineering and development, we need only twenty dollars, but I didn't have, they only have a cell phone line, I didn't have anywhere to transfer that from, so we have to appropriate it. And then in general government, which is seventy-seven eighty and seventy-seven eighty-one, that includes a hundred and forty-five dollars for Mr. Grove's cell phone that he uses for the code enforcement. And then I guess we're gonna need to add about fifteen thousand dollars to that if we're gonna do the demolition of the additional building to cover that cost. And then like I said before, income tax will be fourteen thousand dollars in contractual services for the computers there. And that's all the appropriations. If you want to approve those before I mention the one transfer.
I got one question.
Uh-huh.
How many computers for twenty-six thousand dollars?
Seven. And that's installation, the software, Microsoft just hits you big time.
Yeah, I know.
And Windows, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's expensive.
How old are those computers?
They were purchased in twenty thirteen.
So they're probably past the age of being able to.
To upgrade them, yeah, because I asked about that first, if we could just upgrade it to the new Windows and they said no, that, that would just follow everything up with even a ten.
Did you see any bids on that, the other?
No, we go through our, our whole system is proprietary with software solutions.
All right. So they get to set the price then?
Well, their providers set the price on the computers, they set the price on the installation and that. And from what I understand, those prices are changing daily. So, so we need to take care of it before January one, and if we wait too long, it won't happen before January one.
Anything else? So I have a motion to approve the various appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Then we have one transfer, this doesn't require an appropriation, it's just a transfer from one category to another within the sewage disposal fund. We're moving ten thousand dollars for materials and supplies into contractual services.
Make a motion to approve that?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
Okay, so something more for finance, I will recess at six forty-four. To public participation, is there any? No? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
He's having seven, he'll turn at six forty-five, you know?
Okay, we'll go right on in with special.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
One minute please.
No, I'm, I mean, we need signatures here too.
There's a line, I need extra time.
If you convert some big.
No, you go through that. You make sure you want him down.
Special meeting of the Serra City Council for October the third, two thousand nineteen is called to order. Please stand and join me in pledge of allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call me.
Keever.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trukka.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Boe.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak if anyone would like to address council this evening? None? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
We have one piece of legislation, it's an ordinance, ordinance number thirty-six, not two thirty-six, twenty nineteen, and ordinance authorizing the, that should be ordinance thirty-six, shouldn't be two thirty-six. That's another type, I'll pick that. Ordinance thirty-six, twenty nineteen, and ordinance authorizing the service safety director to contract with Dirt Dog Excavating LLC for the immediate maintenance and repair of combined sewer overflow number six and declaring an emergency. This is a resolution, not an ordinance.
It's ordinance.
Okay, so then it should be ordinance thirty-six on the agenda as well.
That would put you in a order, would it?
Yeah, it does, it does.
Ordinance thirty-six?
Well, no, it.
Or a forty something?
Yeah, I think it's.
Forty-six, forty-seven.
It's forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight? Okay, ordinance forty-eight, dash twenty nineteen, okay?
I'm sorry, it would be fifty-two.
I'm gonna need another pen.
I just replaced my refill today.
Good thing I brought a new one today.
Okay, I need a.
All ex, motion?
I need a motion to accept this as the first reading. Mr. Vog, second by Mr. Keever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty nineteen is referred back to service committee. Is there anyone that would like to address council regarding this piece of legislation? No one? Committee report on pending legislation, service committee?
Service is favorable to ordinance what, fifty?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, two thousand nineteen.
Which is the CSO number six repair. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept this report?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Keever, second by Mr. Vog. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty nineteen, which is the CSO number six repairs, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, wait to read into caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball, yes. Meyer.
Yes.
Trukka.
Yes.
Sack.
Yes.
Boe.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Wireball.
Yes.
Trukka.
Yes.
Sack.
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty nineteen, the CSO number six repairs, is duly adopted. Thank you. We're all here this evening, I need a motion to adjourn city council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shaw to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We are, that motion passed, we adjourned at six fifty-three P M. Thank you. Get the C S O fixed.
Run, man, run. Go get her.